A special election is being held to fill the state senate seat in District 16. After the unexpected death of Senator Breen Harimoto, Republican Kelly Kitashima and Democrat Benet Misalucha are running to fill the remainder of the term. Plus, the Honolulu City Council race to represent Windward Oahu. We'll hear from the top two vote getters from the primary election, Esther Kiaaina and Greg Thielen. Tonight's live broadcast and livestream of Election 2020 on Insights on PBS Hawaii start now.
Aloha and welcome to Insights on PBS Hawaii. I'm Yanji Denise. Tonight, we're covering two Oahu races in the general election. Windward residents will be voting for a new Honolulu City Council member, the race pits Esther Kiaaina against Greg Thielen. But first, the special election for the state senate District 16 seat. Democrat Benet Misalucha and Republican Kelly Kitashima are running to fill the vacancy after the unexpected death of Senator Breen Harimoto. We look forward to your participation in tonight's show. You can email, call, or tweet your questions, and you'll find a livestream of this program at PBSHawaii.org and on the PBS Hawaii Facebook page. Now to the candidates for state senate District 16, which covers several communities, including Pearl City, Aia, Waialua, and Halava. Appearing via the internet are Democrat Benet Misalucha. She was appointed to the seat by Governor David Ege in July. She also runs her own strategic communications and business strategy consulting company. Republican Kelly Kitashima was raised in Aia. She's a hotel executive with over 20 years' experience and was crowned Mrs. Hawaii United States in 2016. Welcome to you both. Thank you so much for being here. We want to start with the basics. Neither of you has been elected to office before. Ms. Kitashima, we'll start with you. What will you bring to this race?
Thank you so much Yanji and PBS Hawaii for having me tonight. I actually ran for city council in 2018 in our district, and we garnered about 45% of the vote. And you know, we always want to teach our kids never to give up. And when this opportunity came, I certainly was not prepared mentally or physically, but it was such a crucial time in our district. Small businesses are in disrepair and concerned over the safety of our community. And so I thought it was a calling that I needed to step up and serve. And here we are today in the special election that we have had about, what, 45 days, Robina, to like prep for, which is not normal, but grateful for the opportunity.
Okay, Ms. Misalucha, what do you bring to the job?
Well, service is a lifelong calling for me, and that's why I volunteered for 30 years for Hawaii's nonprofits. When Senator Breen Harimoto passed away in the middle of this pandemic, I felt the tug. I could not sit and twiddle my thumbs and see this crisis unfold. So I have 30 years of experience. I know I had led teams. I have a proven track record. I was appointed by Governor Ege in July 9th, 2020. And as I rolled up my sleeves and went to work, I knew that four months is not enough. I want to continue the work that I started. I'm not a politician, but I have a lot of love and aloha for Hawaii, and I want to continue to serve.
The pandemic obviously has had a huge impact on our state. Next week, we're opening to transpacific travel. I'd like to hear both of your thoughts on the reopening and if there is a rise in cases, if you think that there should be another statewide shutdown. Ms. Kitashima, we'll start with you.
Yeah, thank you. I think it's a great question. I actually am the Director of Sales in a hotel that's been open during the entire pandemic. So I am proud to say that we've implemented new policies, new procedures, new job descriptions in order to keep our guests and our employees equally safe. I definitely think that there needs to be a little bit of tightening up with the arrival experience. Being that I was in operations, the 14-day quarantine currently is not working. We need to look at a more strict arrival process, looking at other countries, for example, like Hong Kong, where there is a very, very strict arrival process. It takes about seven to eight hours. And the country respects it, the residents love it, and actually, they don't mind the process because they know at the end of the day, it's all about public safety. So I welcome tourism. Of course, I'm in the industry. I don't think we need to take 10,000 visitors like we have. We need to take a quality over quantity approach, but we definitely need to tighten up that arrival experience to make sure our communities are safe.
Okay, and we'll go to you now, Ms. Misalucha. What are your thoughts on the reopening? And are you concerned that we could have a rise in cases and therefore should need another shutdown?
Sure. I'm all for opening the economy, but not at the expense of the health and welfare of our island residents. The way to the economic recovery is really to control the virus. Tourism, I know, is anxious, but I think we need measured steps. I know the governor was talking about whether one test or two tests. I think it should be data-driven. It should be according to what science dictates. I'm also concerned, I think, we need to make sure that we have measured steps in controlling the number of tourists. So we know there's about 4,000 tests that are available on a daily basis, but priority is for residents. And the Department of Health is trying to ramp up with 13,000 that maybe can accommodate both the tourists and the residents, but it's going to take four months in order to be able to accomplish that. So I think we should take measured steps.
Let's stay with you on this next question. I'm interested to know, you know, the state is going to be facing huge budget shortfalls, regardless of how many tourists we have to start. Their anticipation is that it will be a trickle, not necessarily a flood of visitors. And so we are going to have to tighten our belts, especially at the ledge. Do you support cutting state workers, perhaps freezing salaries, maybe doing pay cuts? What's your view on how we can actually weather this pandemic financially?
Are you...
Yes.
Am I first?
Yes, yes, please.
Okay. I wasn't sure. All right. Well, first of all, I want to commend the state employees because I know they're keeping the state government functioning and humming. And I know that furlough is, the governor has indicated furlough as well as other remedies. And you know, I have about 3,000 HGA members in my community, Yanji, and if there's furlough, I'm sure our community in the district will be impacted. Now, however, I'd like to ask the governor to not just consider cuts, but also make sure that we are looking at creative ways to raise revenues. I think let's pivot to a discussion and diversification of the economy because I think that's what needs to be done. Of course, there's long-term measures. We can't throw the baby with a bathwater with tourism. However, there needs to be some ways by which we can, you know, meet the budget shortfalls. I think it would take all of us, particularly maybe bringing, you know, the bargaining units of the unions, the legislature, and of course, the state administration to come up with solutions that would be for the benefit of our community, for the benefit of our state.
Ms. Kitashima, how about you? Do you think that, would you support furloughing some state workers or cutting salaries? How would you handle this financially at the ledge?
Sure, and not at this point. Of course, we're both not, well, I'm personally not there, and I don't have access to all the particulars. I would not be in favor of any sort of furloughs, especially at this point. However, I do think we need to look at departmental savings. I think we're doing things that we perhaps were doing decades ago, and we're still in those same processes. I think that we need to definitely look at our infrastructure and our IT systems and get that up to speed. We are in 2020, and we need to get those systems to 21st century-type technology. For example, the unemployment is, I'm sorry, unacceptable. There are residents in our district that are still waiting months for their unemployment to put food on their table. And when we talk about a budget, I just go back to basics, right? Expenditures cannot exceed revenues, and I'm in a revenue generating position now, and we need to look at contingency plans and contingency plans that don't go out 10 years, don't go out even five years. With the hand that we're held because of the pandemic, we need to come up with a contingency plan that is perhaps a year-long, maybe three years-long, but I definitely think we need to look within departments and how we can save there specifically before we look at any sort of furlough.
One of the major projects in your district, of course, is Aloha Stadium. There's been a lot of talk of revamping the stadium. This is a multimillion-dollar, many-year project. I'd like to hear each of your stances on what should happen with the stadium, given especially the financial crunch we're in. Ms. Kitashima, we'll start with you.
Thank you. This is something I'm actually very passionate about. I cheered for Kamehameha High School. My son plays there now, and you know, it's heartbreaking to think that the kids and the student athletes, you know, can't perform, excuse me, can't compete there. And you know, even the women's soccer team, right? A couple of years ago, declined to play because it wasn't safe enough. So I think it is overdue. I think we need to find a way, whether it's a public partner, private ship, to revitalize that area. It is truly an area that we could look at bringing in entertainment, bringing in global conventions, bringing in massive productions, and we just don't have the venue to do it. If you, I understand, I believe the AV2 is also very dated. So again, we just need to have something to entice the global market to come to. I think we have huge opportunities with Aloha Stadium, especially with there's a rail stop there. So there's lots of opportunity for trend-oriented development as well, a little workplace space. So that would be definitely high on my priority list, is to get Aloha Stadium upgraded and revitalized so that it can be a revenue source for the state.
Ms. Misalucha, how about you? What are your thoughts on what should happen to that project?
So it was established, was built 45 years ago, and I don't know if you realize this, but we spent $30 million just to upkeep and maintain it. So Aloha Stadium, I think, is rusting. And so we need a, and it's, you know, we need an iconic stadium that would be a source of pride for our community. From what I gathered, they have a master plan that's going to be forthcoming. From what I gathered, also, there are six, already six developers who are interested in a private-public partnership. I do think it behooves whoever wins that project that they need to continue to engage the community in a dialogue to make sure that all the community concerns are addressed.
Well, speaking of the community, Brent from Pearl City has a question that I'd like to pose to both of you, and that is, what work have you done in the local community in recent memory? Ms. Kitashima, we'll start with you.
Well, let's see. I got, I don't want to go maybe too far back, but I, both my kids are very active within the community. My son played Little League for many years there before he started at Kamehameha, and my little one goes to Proridge Elementary, and I was on the PTA there. But she also attends Rainbow Gymnastics, and it's quite heartbreaking right now. They are closed because of the tier system, but we're very active in the community because of the kids. But personally, I'm actually part of our Lions Club in Aia, and they're an amazing group. Benet knows them as well, small community. But every Saturday, every Saturday morning at 6:30, you will see them on the side of the road, either painting graffiti or picking up trash, but they just have a deep, deep pride for the community. So during the pandemic, I haven't been as active, but it does bring joy every Saturday morning to see them caring so much for our community.
Okay, and Ms. Misalucha, what's your community involvement?
Kelly talked about the Lions. I've actually been with them for the last two or three times, doing projects out there. In recent memory, I was part of a team that was raising funds for, or school supplies for the Breen Harimoto inaugural school supply fund drive. And actually, we raised $10,000 and the supply drive for the 10 complex schools in the district. Also, in addition to that, I'm actually leading the charge to do a food distribution, particularly for economically disadvantaged families in the forthcoming months, because we know that at this time, the economy is probably, you know, bottom, going to be bottoming out, and these families need the support. So we're partnering with Aloha Harvest, and we're bringing to bear all the various community associations, and we're leading that charge to do that. And more of that to come, more information to come, hopefully.
Okay, another question from our viewers tonight, and we'll pose it to both of you. We'll start with you, Ms. Misalucha. What are your thoughts on schools reopening? How do you feel about how to do that safely?
You know, I am for opening of the schools as long as they have a plan. And I know each of the complex has the wherewithal to be able to find out what is in their best interest. I do want to save and of course, the welfare and the health of our Keikis and our school principals, as well as their teachers, is of paramount and significant importance. But what I'd like to also have people think about is, how do we think of school in a very different light? It cannot be same-old, same-old. I think we need to be able to think, what would education be like in, you know, so many years from now? I am in awe, though, because I've been visiting schools. I've visited so far three schools, Waialua Elementary, Pearl Highlands Elementary, as well as Aia Elementary, and I am in awe of the creative ways teachers have been doing. When you look at, you know, the fact that it's difficult enough to hold a child's attention in person, imagine what it'd be like online, but I am in awe. Everybody's, you know, trying to do the best they can in this challenging situation.
Ms. Kitashima, what's your view on the schools reopening?
Yeah, so you know, kind of a quick fun fact, in 2018, when I ran for city council, I actually quit my corporate job to focus on the election and the campaign, and I actually got certified as a substitute teacher. So I actually taught special ed within the district and got a better understanding from the inside out on the school system. And of course, that was when traditional school was still taking place. But now, with distance learning, and again, we have a third grader going through the process, and tons of family and friends that are also schoolteachers. And from what I understand, it actually takes them double the time to prep because you're having to do the online prep, you're having to do online agendas, and so it is a massive undertaking. However, I am very nervous for the residual long-term effects that it will have on our Keiki, the isolation, the distance, the, you know, not having those big personal relationships with friends. So I definitely in favor of the principal making the call for their school. I am in favor of the hybrid model that they currently have in place. I'm hoping and crossing my fingers that we can implement that hybrid system, the AB school schedule, which essentially is two days, two days, and I believe a combo day on Friday. But no, our children need stimulation, and our children need to be active, and they need to see their teachers and their friends in person.
You know, I'm curious to know what each of you, obviously, you'd be working at the legislature, but what are your thoughts on the mayor's current four-tiered system? Do you think that it's a good program that's in place? Are you more of an advocate for opening more businesses, or do you think that these restrictions are reasonable? Ms. Kitashima, we'll start with you.
Thank you. Oh, my gosh. This is something I'm actually very, quite passionate about. I go back to my daughter who takes gymnastics. Rainbow Gymnastics, which has been in our district for 35 years, is categorized into tier four, right above a bar. They're in a warehouse area. They have high ceilings. They have ventilation of outdoor circulation. They have put into new protocols, new infrastructure. As you know, gymnastics doesn't require, you know, contact. It's, you know, a cartwheel is very individual. So no, I don't think there was enough community input. I don't think there was enough professional input. It's kind of like the lockdown, where you have a one-size-fits-all, and it's okay for the big boxes that they open, but we hurt our small husband-and-wife, local generational businesses that unfortunately are not sure if they're going to be able to endure this. So no, I don't think the tier system is fair, nor do I think it's working. I think it needs to be fluid. It needs to get more input from actual professionals and actual leaders within our community to get a better understanding. And it needs to not be kind of a set-it-and-forget-it document. It needs to change as we learn and we grow together to open up the economy.
Ms. Misalucha, what's your view on that system?
Sure. I know it's easy to be a Monday morning quarterback, but I'd like to believe that, yes, there were missteps in the beginning, but I think they're on the right track. I'd like to address the fact, though, that for small businesses, they are hurting, and particularly in our district, the small business is the backbone of our economy. And when you look at the corridors along Wanalua and Kamehameha Highway, it's filled with small businesses, mostly mom and pops. And I've had a chance to speak with them, and many of them actually speak English as a second language. And so many of them have not even been able to access CARES money. So one of the things that we're trying to do is actually do an inventory in our neighborhood of how many businesses are closed and have been, in fact, impacted by COVID, because it's difficult to advocate for something that you don't have any data on. One of the other things, the other things that we're also doing is trying to bring language access to our small businesses so that they can be able to be provided with the information. We're actually in the process of also putting together a virtual town hall meeting with the Chamber of Commerce so that if the mountain, if we cannot go to the mountain, the mountain can come to us. One of the other things that I'm passionate about is trying to see what, how the district can also take care of itself, because sometimes we can't wait for government. So hopefully, the two-thirds of our community can help those who are not in, or restaurants or small businesses who are suffering. So what I'm trying to do is, again, neighbors helping neighbors, being resilient, because that's what we need to do, building economic resilience and building economic sustainability in our community.
Well, on the topic of economics, we have another viewer question in tonight, and it's for each of you. Ms. Kitashima, we'll start with you on this. Can you demonstrate how you will boost jobs and increase pay for essential workers?
Absolutely. And again, I'm so proud of the team here, considering that we've been open at a new hotel in Kapolei, and we had to take major steps, again, new protocols, new SOPs. But I just wanted to make sure I understand the question. His question is, how are we going to create jobs?
How you will boost jobs and increase pay for essential workers?
Just specifically for essential workers.
That's the question that we got. But I'm curious if you have a broader view as well.
Yeah, well, I actually would like to actually address the essential workers and just, you know, a big mahalo to you and your families that have sacrificed during this pandemic and, you know, wearing our masks 12 hours a day. I am in full support of any essential worker and their company that they are eligible for hazardous pay. Unfortunately, I did speak with several companies that are not paying their essential workers hazardous pay, and I think that's something that should have been universal, especially with the CARES money that we got. But we definitely need to take care of our essential workers who have put themselves out on the front lines. And for example, I think with good intentions with the $500 gift card to the unemployed, which my heart goes out to, I think it should have been fair across the board, and that something like that should have been made available to all essential workers. But I thank them for their service during this time, and if anything, I think we should show them much more appreciation and again, be eligible for whatever hazardous pay that we could, using the funds that we had from the federal government.
Okay, Ms. Misalucha, let's get to you on this.
Yes, sure. And I want to thank the essential workers for all the work that they do, for the heart and the passion and the aloha that they have for their patience and the constituents that they have. However, I'm also, by the way, in favor, speaking broadly, of raising the minimum wage as well as family leave. However, at this time, I think everybody is in hardship, so we may need to revisit that. I think we need to save jobs, then, you know, expand. And I think, again, we're all in this together. We want to be able to be, to have a sense of aloha for everyone.
Okay. We have just a few minutes left, but I'd like to ask each of you, obviously, you both have great intentions here, but what distinguishes you from your opponent? What makes you the best candidate for the job? Ms. Misalucha, we'll start with you.
Sure. I have 30 years of career experience, and again, from a broad sectors of various sectors of the economy. I also have a passion and love for Hawaii, and I have 30 years of volunteer experience. I have looked at and handled crises. I've led teams. I bring, I'm able to collaborate. I have great relationships with elected officials. Being a Democrat, I'm able to bring all this to the benefit of my community. Again, I humbly ask for my district's support in order to serve and to continue to serve.
And Ms. Kitashima, what distinguishes you from your opponent? Why are you the best candidate for this job?
Sure. Well, I wanted to just quickly kind of give a backstory on our motto. So our campaign motto is, "You deserve a choice." And you deserve a choice in this election because, it's kind of a fun fact, but this race has actually gone uncontested for nearly three decades. There were a couple of candidates that ran unsuccessfully, but really, our community hasn't really had a choice in this particular race. And so my husband and I really thought that this year was just such a crucial year to, again, step up with the momentum that we had from city council in 2018, to really provide a choice, again, for the community that didn't have one. And so being that, I do have hands-on experience in our number-one industry of hotel, which I think we need to ramp up, again, tourism to restart the economy immediately. I'm definitely in favor of diversifying the economy, but that's going to take a little longer than anticipated. So we need to start getting revenue streams to the local economy, and I think tourism is going to be that short-term answer. I have direct experience in that, and I think sometimes not having experience, you know, in the ledge and looking outside in is a little easier. So what I can say is, I have hands-on experience. I have hands-on experience with the budget. I have hands-on experience in crisis management. I have hands-on experience doing new policies and procedures during a pandemic. And so I think that I would be a great option for the district's seat for our special election.
Okay, thank you both so much. Last question, we only have, we have less than two minutes, so let's keep this really short. You know, we saw a lot of back and forth when it came to the ledge and the governor over the CARES Act money. Can you tell us, just briefly, in the last minute, we'll have each of you about 20 seconds, what your leadership style is and how you will be more productive in the next session? Ms. Misalucha, we'll start with you.
Sure. So I work very collaboratively. I am able to bring people together. So the fact is, I was endorsed by 13 unions, but at the same time, I'm also endorsed by the Chamber of Commerce and some members of the Hawaii Insurance Council. That speaks volumes about the kind of style and leadership style I have. I bring people together. I'm a problem solver. And this kind of pandemic that we have right now needs leadership.
Okay, I have to, I have to leave you there just to give her equal time, but thank you so much. And Ms. Kitashima, same question.
Thank you. So I think, I'm here to listen. I come with a servant heart, and I think most importantly, we need to listen to our district, and we need to listen to the concerns of our constituents. It infuriates me, actually, dealing with our current officials, just trying to get ahold of them sometimes is very cumbersome, and the lack of response is very frustrating. So I commit to always being a very forthright and also very, like, 20-hour response time is kind of my golden rule here, but I commit...
Okay, we have to leave it there. Thank you so much. I know we could talk all night, but we want to thank you so much for being here. The candidates for state senate District 16, Kelly Kitashima and Benet Misalucha. As we get ready for our next segment, please enjoy this hikino story from students at Kalahau High School. Thanks so much. We'll be right back.
Looking at Kailua Town, you wouldn't necessarily know there was a World War II bunker still in use today. But right in our backyards, buried in the hillside, lies Battery 405, fortified with years of intriguing history.
So right after the bombing of Pearl Harbor, the government figured that we needed more protection in Hawaii around the coastline, and they built this bunker and other bunkers as part of the seacoast defense system. This bunker was actually built in 1943 after the bombing of Pearl Harbor.
Bunker 405 was built with two of the guns that came off the ships at Pearl Harbor.
When you take a ship gun and put it on land, the gun needs an elaborate cement slab all the way around the gun to disperse the shock wave.
Guns fired at sea have enough power to move the entire ship several feet through the water. So you can only imagine the repercussions of firing a gun like that on land.
Outside here, the gun had a little building over the top of it, and the entrance to the bunker had a building over the top of it, and both buildings had a Japanese motif to it. And in those days, the idea the United States government had is if the guns were disguised like a Japanese village, that the Japanese wouldn't bomb this facility.
The main infrastructure of Bunker 405 was accompanied by another bunker at higher elevation called Fire Control. Up at this bunker, men would be scanning the horizon for threats.
And he would have these books back then. One was all the shapes of the different ships of all the countries in the world, and the other was the shapes and the types of airplanes and aircraft.
With the help of these logbooks, someone would be able to identify any plane that might have flown in the sky. Having fulfilled its purpose in World War II, the bunker was decommissioned in 1950.
The man that had it from 1950, when it was decommissioned, to 2000 grew mushrooms here. His name was Ron Dizeroth, and his hobby was growing mushrooms. He obtained two specific patents for certain types of mushrooms in Hawaii.
Gary met Ron at a local restaurant in Kailua and was invited to visit the bunker.
And I thought that this would be a really great place to have a data center or a place to back up data.
Backed by Weller's determination and his dedication to put the bunker to good use, Battery 405 will soon be a fully functioning digital archive system.
We started a process of cleaning the bunker out, putting in new electric, computer floor. The first room is... floor. The first room is complete now, and we're starting to market the data center.
Upon its completion, the bunker will sit on Kalahio Hillside as a symbol of Kailua's strength and resilience. This has been Ashley Stankovitz from Kalahio High School for Hikino.
And thank you so much for joining us and for coming back. Welcome back. Well, although he left the Honolulu City Council a little bit early, Ikaika Anderson had reached the end of his term limit for District 3, Winward Oahu. He'd left that open. And tonight, we're going to hear from the top two vote-getters to advance from the primary election. Esther Kiaaina is a graduate of Kamehameha Schools, the University of Southern California, and the George Washington University Law School. She worked in the Department of the Interior and is the Executive Director of the Pacific Basin Development Council. And Greg Thielen was born and raised in Winward Oahu for nearly 20 years. He's owned and operated a home building and remodeling contracting company and has been named the BIA Hawaii Builder of the Year. He's the son of longtime state lawmaker Cynthia Thielen. Thank you both for being here tonight in person, but of course socially distanced and with a mask. Let's get right down to it. Let's start with the basics. Mr. Thielen, do you agree with the mayor's four-tier system? Do you think that it's reasonable or too restrictive?
I think it's a good start. I wish he had started it sooner. I think back in April probably would have been appropriate. I'm concerned that we don't move from tier to tier quickly enough could be a potential problem. But I have been impressed with the way things have started to move now. It's just taken too long to get to this point.
Would you advocate, then, to have, instead of having this four-week sort of incubation period, if you will, making it two weeks, three weeks, something like that? Or do you think that the numbers themselves are too restrictive?
Well, I think what I was saying more is the time it took to get it started. I think that the decision to move from tier to tier needs to be driven by data and not by gut feelings. The main thing is we can't bounce in and out of these shutdowns anymore.
Ms. Kiaaina, what's your view? Do you agree with the mayor's plan in that tiered system?
Absolutely. I actually concur with Greg with regard to its value. It should have been done earlier, but I believe there is flexibility, and the mayor said so in a press conference, that should he believe that shortening the timeframe before we go to the next tier might be warranted. And I think, so we might be able to see some changes before October 22nd, which is the trigger date to move into the next tier. But I also believe that you just can't have this tiered system without a commitment to making sure that we have all the health and safety protocols in place to be able to do what is necessary to safeguard public health.
You know, on that issue of public health, one of the things that might keep us in a lower tier, in a more restrictive tier, of course, is introducing visitors. Trans-Pacific Travel does open next week, and we are expecting that some cases will slip through even with the testing. The city council passed a resolution just yesterday asking for the governor to opt for a two-test or more system. Do you agree with the city council on this? We'll start with you. And if so, how long would you delay reopening tourism for trans-Pacific travel?
I don't believe we should delay it any further. I think we should move forward with it. I would like to see a two-test system put into effect, but I don't think we can wait until we're ready. We have to learn how to live with this disease. There's no getting around it. It's going to be with us for a while. And the recovery of our economy and getting people back to work is a real priority.
What do you think living with disease actually looks like? What's a reasonable way to do that?
Well, I think, for one thing, we're going to be dealing with these for quite a while. I think we're going to have to be dealing with social distancing for quite a while. I think we're not going to be able to go back to large gatherings. I think that there's going to be some changes to society. I think we're going to be working from home more. And I think there's some benefits to some of those things in terms of the reduced traffic on the road and more time for us to be with our families.
Okay. Ms. Kiaaina, what about you? The city council passing that resolution to say that we should have a two-test system, do you agree with that? Do you think we should delay opening tourism?
I believe that, I feel the same as everyone. A lot of times, these major decisions come out, we're all in a conundrum. In other words, of course, I would want extra safeguards. So I actually share the city council's concerns. What bothers me is, why is there not clearer consultation between the state, with the county, as well as the legislators? I think if they were to consult people, we wouldn't be in this situation. So I would like the parties to get together to try to find an expeditious way for us to get more testing, to be able to do the safeguards necessary to reopen Hawaii's economy.
Do you agree with Mr. Thielen that we should learn to essentially live with the virus and that, you know, they should reopen it next week? Or would you push for a delay?
I have my reservations.
And in your view, what does living with the virus look like?
Living with the virus, regrettably, is, we have to change the whole psyche of how we look at the world. And it's a scary world. But it need not be scary if our leaders instill confidence in us that we could take their word at taking care of us. And I don't feel that confidence right now, both with regard to reopening up our everyday lives as well as the economy. And it concerns me. And so I just wish with all my heart, for example, for all of the mayors to be considering now to opt out of the reopening of the arrivals for tourism. That concerns me. What is going on here? So when we see these constant major decisions being made, and that you have the major mayors, all of the mayors and the governor in disunified, it does not send a good message to the general public, including myself.
If elected, you would be one of five new city council members, and you'd be working with a new mayor. Do you have a preference? Who would you prefer to work with, Keith Amamia or Rick Blangiardi?
I think, I think, I'll probably both answer this question the same way, is that we don't want to take sides in that race because we need to be able to work with whoever the people choose. And I feel like I could work well with either one of them. I think that the interesting thing to me is that they both come from outside of politics. And the voters clearly have chosen that as something that they want in their mayor. And for me, from my background, I find some solace in that, and I think it's a good thing. But I would be happy to work with either one of them.
What's your view? Do you have a preference?
No, I don't have a preference. I actually respect both of them. I've had the honor of meeting both of them, talking story, and I think both of them would make fine mayors. Honolulu is lucky to have two solid candidates.
Well, I had to ask, but you were both very diplomatic on that question. This is a question from social media. Many people have lost their jobs. Some jobs may not return. Folks may need to find new jobs in a different field. What are your thoughts or plans for workforce development so folks can be ready and qualified for jobs that will come? We'll start with you.
Well, the good news is that the Chamber of Commerce and all of our leaders, they're actually doing a good job on that, in concert with the universities and community colleges. In other words, they're already ramping up workforce development opportunities and pairing up jobs with where the need is. So that needs to continue. The Federal CARES Act, of course, allows for that. But separate from that, it has to be talking about a norm of our life. Workforce development should have always been a norm in our life. And if we did that, we would not be in a situation where we are overly dependent on tourism and not diversified. So the failure to diversify our economy is based on our failure to do a good job on workforce development. And there's bound to fall a funding out there to get that done. So that would be a top priority of mine. In my current nonprofit, I actually work on workforce development, both here in Hawaii as well as the U.S. Pacific Territories.
What's your view on that? I mean, we've been talking about diversifying our economy for decades now. What would you say to the person who wrote this?
Well, I would say necessity is the mother of invention. And we have a situation where we're going to need bottom-up entrepreneurs to lead us in diversification effort. I don't believe we can take a top-down approach, as we have done in the past, where we try to pick an industry as a winner and support that industry at the cost of others. We need our entrepreneurs to be the ones that lead us out of this. I also definitely believe in workforce development and training. I personally spent time as a youth build instructor, teaching pre-apprenticeship construction training. And I know firsthand how important that is to those people, to get that opportunity to learn a trade, but also to be interacting with a mentor.
I want to ask you a question about something that's been, you know, troubling Oahu long before the pandemic, and that is the issue of homelessness. What more do you think the city council and the city itself can do to address this issue, especially now with all the financial hardship that the pandemic has brought?
Well, homelessness is often lumped together as a single issue, but it's really a very diverse group of people. I've been a supporter, as well as a volunteer, for a program called Family Promise that helps families experiencing homelessness. And it gets them back on their feet and into housing and gets them job training. That program is incredibly successful, but it would not work for people that are dealing with substance abuse or mental health issues. So what we need to do is we need to have treatment programs that treat each of the diverse populations within that community. The one unifying factor that they all have in common, though, is a lack of affordable housing. And that's something the city really needs to focus on, is expanding affordable housing.
And how specifically do you think the council can help in that regard?
I think it can provide different opportunities, work with local communities and developers to try and come up with locations for projects. It can be creative with its zoning policies. I think we're going to be dealing with a lot of buildings that are going to need to be repurposed. I alluded to the fact that more people are going to be working from home. I think there's going to be buildings that are currently used as office buildings that can be converted to residential. I think we've all realized that tourists are not coming back anywhere near the numbers that they were before, and there's potential opportunities in hotel rooms as well. So I think it's a function of being creative. It's a function of understanding where the barriers are and understanding how to work past them.
Okay, let's talk about homelessness. What's your view on what more the city can do in that regard?
Sure. And while I'm talking on homelessness, you need to know that a lot of the strategies can actually apply to affordable housing, of course. And to start with, I do believe that there needs to be better collaboration between the city and county. And I'm dealing with the situation in Waimea Manalo at the moment with the homestead community. We are working with 50 individuals who are homeless, abutting a homestead property temporarily on DLNR land with no permitted authorization. And we're working currently with DLNR, state and county officials, to find an alternative location. And it's been challenging to be able to do this. And so I think one thing leaders have to do is, separate from the social services, the social services has to be targeted for who you're trying to help, whether it's mental health, substance abuse. A lot of the families, quite frankly, are working, working individuals, or families in the case of Waimea Manalo. And for them, the solution is to find either temporary or permanent housing, right? So I think the city and the state can do better jobs and better coordination. If it's because the housing czars or coordinators don't have enough authority, then let's give it to them. So everything I just said could apply to affordable housing. Identify city and state property where it's best suited for either homeless shelter or affordable housing. Work with our private sector to make sure that we could, you know, have public-private partnerships when it's appropriate. And then, of course, have wraparound services for our homeless population in the interim, as well as consider workforce development, keep on going back to workforce development, right? Workforce development opportunities or educational opportunities to increase their mobility in society. So once we increase their mobility in society, we would be able to get them to a better place to be able to afford home.
One of the big topics that you will be addressing is one that Barbara from Kailua just wrote in. She says, with the city and county experiencing financial troubles, would you support stopping spending or work on the rail? Let's start with you on this.
At the moment, no. My answer would be no. That's not actually the solution for that issue, although where we are, budgetary is. And with the shortfall in revenue, both for the state and the city, I think we all have to reprioritize our priorities, look at cost savings across the board for where that could occur. For me, furloughs of employees should be a last resort. There are so many avenues to consider cost savings. I think we need to do a better job collectively to utilize not just Federal CARES Act, but federal funding in general. We have two delegation members that sit on the Appropriations Committee, Senator Schatz and Congressman Case. I don't believe we are availing ourselves of their assets. It's been 30 years since Senator Akaka moved to the Senate that we've had two members of the delegation on the Appropriations Committee. We also are not utilizing the available federal grants process. Lastly, in considering revenue generation, I would consider increasing property taxes for non-resident investors as well as vacant homes.
What's your view on the rail project? What can the city do to finish it, and should they finish it?
Well, absolutely. I think that there's some important things that we need to do. Number one, I've been advocating a pause at Middle Street. I think we need to stop and reassess the project and reassess our finances. I think we also need to be very clear that the original sale of the project to the citizens was promised that the money to pay for construction would only come from the general excise tax and the federal dollars that were coming in. It's unfortunate that the city council went ahead and used city funds that come from property tax to pay for some of the construction. And I'm very pleased that they're moving forward with the bill currently to reverse that process because that is something I would always vote against. I do not believe those funds should be used for that purpose. I've also been very vocal, going all the way back to August, calling for the firing of Andrew Robbins as Executive Director at Hart because of the privacy surrounding the P3 bids. It is shameful to me that those bids are being kept secret. As a final point, on rail, I just would say that one thing that I think is very important is that we bring back the forensic audit.
So you would pause at Middle Street. Do you take that same view?
Not at the moment. I am concerned about what is going on with the P3 contract. And what is more concerning to me is who's on first. Who has authority, the Hart Board or the mayor? That's troubling. It should be troubling for all of us. My concern is that if the mayor and the Hart Board and the city council, moving forward after the election, do not get their act together, they will lose confidence from the general public, and they will lose confidence of our federal funders. And we can't afford that. At the moment, I'm in support of having the rail be completed, but given what is going on, I will certainly entertain a potential pause if, in fact, what is going on continues. So I'm very concerned about the last leg.
May I add one point? I think that the public trust is lost already. I think we're beyond that point, and I think that's why I support the pause, because we need to restore transparency and accountability to this process. It's had none, and that's been the main downfall of the project. We need to work the project to our budget, not the other way around.
Let's move to an issue that is in the district, and that is the Kauai Nui Street Affordable Housing Project. It was controversial. The council recently rejected that project. What action would you take to bring more affordable housing to the Winward side? And what did you think of that rejection?
So it's funny. I've been taking a lot of hits from both sides of this issue because I've been an advocate for housing for decades. And so most of the people that I know and have worked with in that capacity were disappointed with the fact that I opposed the project. Most of the people that opposed the project are disappointed because I didn't oppose it vociferously enough, apparently. The main problem with that project is it's part of the 201H state law process. And that process allows for counties to provide discretionary exemptions to zoning requirements. But the key word is discretionary. The way that project was put forward, it was put forward almost like a set of demands, like this is what you will give us, and in exchange, we will give you affordable housing. To me, the process cannot exist that way. It needs to be a process of engagement. And I want to be very clear on a point. It's easy to say yes. It's easy to say no. It's hard work to do the work of engagement and trying to find a middle ground. But I am committed to doing that. And I want to try and bring people together to make those situations, instead of being like the one in Kailua, where it was people that were either yes or no, is maybe we can figure out a way that we can all agree to this.
What's your view on that decision, the rejection of that project? And how would you inspire more affordable housing in an area that obviously needs it so much?
Well, I agree with Chair Anderson's amendment to pull the project. I was at the neighborhood board meetings, testified in opposition at the outset, and that was after conducting my own due diligence, that is, speaking with the community. that was after conducting my own due diligence, that is, speaking with the community, speaking with the developer, and listening to over 400 people, both formerly or there were 400 people who attended this neighborhood board meeting. And what I found out was that this argument that it was not in my not in my backyard or just they like to just say, no, 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 it was inaccurate, and it all came down to location. I'm actually not very far from there. It's a very congested neighborhood, and so I I agree with what happened. I also testified three times in front of the city council, and a lot of these issues to get a job done effectively, you actually have to do the work to get it done. And so so I'm I'm opposed to it, but what I told the community is that it's not enough to say no. We need not wait for a statute or lawmakers to help us. So there is a community-based effort right now to identify both public property, state and county, as well as private property, commercial property, that would be conducive for that. I think we need to reevaluate the 201H process. It was well-intended to incentivize developers, but the process is not working, and so we can't afford this. We're all on the same page, but we need to acknowledge the flaws of community consultation and the right location.
We have just under five minutes, so we want to get through a few of these really quickly. What do you think the city should do with the Haiku stairs?
Right now, we're going through a process of putting out or we, the city is putting out a process, going through the process of putting out a request for proposals for managed access. I believe that we are at a point where we need to either get it right or we need to call it quits. I think that the important thing with Haiku stairs to acknowledge, and I actually wrote a blog post about this called Our Special Places, and I'll I'll compare it to the pillboxes of La Ni Kai as well, is because of social media, they're just overrun. The communities that have these special places are bearing a terrible brunt of intrusion that's occurring all day and night, and there's a tremendous impact in terms of trash, sleepless nights, crime, people have gotten into fights. We've got to figure out a way to try to make it work because it's an important historical art element of our of our island. But at the end of the day, if we can't, if we can't control the access, if we can't manage it properly, we owe it to the people of Haiku to close it down.
Okay, I have to leave it there. And what is your view on the stairs?
I have concerns over the stairs being there, mostly because I was the former land asset manager for Kameha Schools in that region. I'm quite familiar with the neighborhood and all of the travails that Greg just talked about. And so my view is we will have to listen to all parties. I've already been contacted by the friends of Haiku stairs who would like it to be maintained for future generations, and that's a topic of discussion that we're all going to have to have at the moment. Again, I believe quality of life for all neighborhoods is critically important, especially at the city council, and those that are most effective should have a larger say. And it's easy for people to come in and and go up there and have a wonderful day, but at the end of the day, they go home.
Okay, we've got
And the other issue, of course, is liability. There needs to be stricter enforcement of those violators, and they they need to be fined.
And we have just two minutes left, so I'd like to ask each of you. We'll have five new council members coming up in the new council. What do each of you bring to that dynamic? We'll have about a minute each. Go ahead.
Well, definitely the grit and determination and creativity of a small business owner, the ability to do more with less, the ability to work within budgets and schedules. I think these are all elements that are very important to the council and underrepresented. I think another element is my time in the district. I was born and raised there. Other than a few years away at college and a few years living in Makiki while I saved up to be able to move back home, I've lived there my whole life. The parks and rec centers and playgrounds, not only did I play on them, but my children play on them now. So I have a very deep personal connection to the place that I want to serve, and I think those are the two elements I bring.
Okay, and just for equal time, we have to give you the last word.
Sure. Well, as a native Hawaiian, I care deeply about alohaaina, and that includes that includes the the Winward the Winward side. I have a lot of government experience, 30 years, when I include both my federal and state and nonprofit experience, but most importantly, I have a record of achievement of getting things done collaboratively within the executive branches of government as well as the legislative branches of government. And at this point in time for the city council, I believe the people of the Winward the Winward side would be better served by someone who'd be able to navigate those processes as we leverage what funds we do have in concert with the state and federal governments.
Okay, well, mahalo to both of you for joining us. Of course, we thank our guests, the candidates for Honolulu City Council District 3, Esther Kiaaina and Greg Thielen. Next week on Insights, two races for the state legislature where there are no incumbent candidates. Our first half hour will cover the race for State House District 30, and then we'll hear from the candidates vying for State Senate District 25. We hope you'll join us then. I'm Yenji Denise for Insights on PBS Hawaii. Aloha.